Twenty, item number three, twenty-one Columbus Avenue has also been adjourned. Uh, item number four, eight Marbledale Road, which is for site plan. And, uh, one forty-five Main Street, that's our site plan as well. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes held on October fifteenth. Nancy, please take a role.
Commissioner Nerrigan.
Four.
Commissioner Vara.
Four.
Commissioner Fores.
Four.
Commissioner Casalana.
Four.
Chairman Lee.
In favor. At this time, we call up, uh, one forty-five Main Street. What? We've emailed to you. This one? Wait, Chicago?
Yeah.
Do you want a copy? Do you need a copy? You want a copy? Sure.
Thank you.
What? You did it, really? Thank you.
How are you today?
Well, with that going before.
You're making friends?
I've been here and I forgot.
Um, it was P T I. P T I is a.
Okay.
Huh? Yeah.
Wow, all these handouts.
Thank you.
These are some, I think Len's.
Is it Christmas already?
This Commissioner, members of the board, Brandonis, the architect for Instinct Dogs and Behavior. Uh, we also have the person who's gonna be running this, Megan, who's gonna give a little presentation. Uh, package that we had emailed to you, part of that, uh, that you would request it about information, how the dogs are gonna be run, how people are gonna be brought in, how often they're gonna be brought in, and she's gonna give you a little rundown on that right now.
Okay, and then you'll give us, talk to us about the project? Okay. Hi.
Hi, I'm, uh, Megan Coria, I'm co-owner of Instinct Westchester.
Okay.
Um, so I wanted to tell you a little bit about this business and how it'll be in the community. We're a dog boarding and training facility.
Mm-hmm.
So we help families who are having problems with their dogs, or if they're going on vacation and they want their dog to pick up some new behaviors. Um, or if they got a puppy and suddenly they have to house-train the puppy and it feels very overwhelming to them, which happens sometimes. Um, we help families with that, um, as well. Um, one part of the Instinct model is having a veterinary behaviorist working out of the facility. Their own separate business, but it's in our facility, um, and we share clients and information between each other. Um, we have some veterinary behaviorists here today. There are only about seventy-five of them in the whole country, so I'm surprised they let two of them be in the same room together. Um, and that's, um, a really nice resource for a community to have. Uh, we will be creating jobs and growth opportunities for our employees that we hope to hire locally. And also, one thing that we offer communities is free educational, um, programs for dog owners, including monthly seminars that are free and open to the public. Uh, puppy classes that are also free, uh, where the dogs learn how to socialize and do sort of the basic obedience, um, behaviors. And then for clients who participate in our board and train programs, we offer free, uh, canine good citizen classes. Which is an A K C program.
Those monthly as well?
Yeah, it depends on the number of alumni who are interested, but yeah, every four to six weeks.
Right.
We offer those on, uh, evenings and weekends.
Okay.
I know that traffic is a concern on Main Street, so most of my slides are about traffic. Um, we will have six employees on-site at the busiest times. And that's a lot less than P T I had, 'cause they had thirty-five employees. I just found out from Oliver. Uh, we plan to rent spaces from Shiloh Baptist Church, and I spoke to Reverend Gerald about that, and he says that he has the number that we need, we can rent six spaces from him.
Uh, just to kind of forewarn you, he doesn't have a parking lot license.
Oh, he said that there was a.
So my understanding is he doesn't have a parking lot license, so he needs to get one before he can acquire anything.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, he may be renting spaces, but unfortunately, he may not have a, a parking lot license, so he's gonna have to deal with that. And once he does that, you will need to get a lease.
Right.
For a number of parking spaces, submit it as part of your application, and then we'll go from there.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Um, we are gonna reserve the parking that is on the facility site.
Mm-hmm.
The little lot in front of the building for our clients doing pickups and drop-offs and lessons. And there should never be more than four clients there at a time, and it's hard to imagine a time when there would be that many clients on-site, um, during business hours. Um, mostly because we schedule pickups and drop-offs so that we don't have a whole bunch of dogs, like, rushing up to the, to the gates to come in.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, Instinct uses Calendly to schedule dogs so that they're, they're spaced out, and once the spot is taken, they can't, they, they have to take like a different time. Um.
So if I board my, my dog.
Right.
If I had a dog.
Yeah.
Um, then if I wanted to pick up for argument's sake at any time, let's say I'm back from work early, I'd have to still, uh, go into your app and select the time to pick up? Or could I just knock on your door and pick up my dog?
Well, you sir could just call the front desk and see what it.
Well, not me, I mean, let's say, let's say Dave, let's, let's say Miss.
So sometimes plans change, um, and, but clients, with this kind of business, we're always in touch with clients, they wanna know how their dogs are doing.
Of course.
They know how to contact us, and we, so they usually will let us know if they're running late or early, no one's ever running early usually with this kind of thing, but if they're running late. Um, and we always try to, try our best to work it out. But we only schedule one pickup and drop-off at a time, so, even if there's some overlap, hopefully it's not all four people suddenly showing up at the same.
Right, right. Okay.
The, the, um, with the board and train and the puppy raising programs, which are sort of the main part of the business. Um, it, it, at Instinct in East Harlem, on their very busiest day, which is in the summertime, uh, they had an average of six pickups and drop-offs per day.
Okay.
Some of those are in the morning, some of them at night.
Okay.
Um, the other program that is a little bit new to Instinct and that we hope to be starting off, launching with when we open, is day school. And for that, we'll have an estimated ten dogs. Um, the dogs will be arriving over about three hours in the morning, probably between about seven A M. and ten A M. Um, and then the, those dogs will be going home in the evening, probably between about five P M. and seven thirty P M.
Is that the maximum number you'll have, or you can potentially have more?
We could potentially have more, but that's what we would sort of start with, and that's our estimate for what, for the interest that we'll have in that program here.
Do you have a maximum number that you, I mean, I guess as part of, just to forewarn you, as part of the condition of approval, eventually we'll say, okay, you cannot board more than X number of dogs. So I wanna make sure you understand, let's say, if it, if you eventually will get to, let's say fifteen for argument's sake, right, you should probably put down fifteen. Or, uh, you, ultimately, your, your ultimate goal, basically, that's what I'm trying to advise you.
Okay.
All right.
Can I think on that?
No, no.
In December and tell you.
Yes, of course, 'cause we're not doing anything tonight, because again, we have an issue with the Shiloh Baptist Church. All right, so this is kind of just an open discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Um, and I also expect that with day school, that that will be a more, really truly more locally, local interest in that.
Mm-hmm.
Because it is twice a week and, and they have to do a lesson with us, with the owners too. So, um, I suspect we might have dogs being walked in, that there'll be pedestrian dogs, and then their owners will walk right over to the train station.
Okay.
Um, the additional programs that we offer, like community workshops and the canine good citizen classes, uh, those are, uh, for the community workshops are ten to twenty people usually. It's humans only, uh, not dogs. Um, again, we might be drawing locally there, so some people might walk in for those, some people could actually take the train in.
Are those weekdays or weekends?
Weekends and evenings.
Okay.
We have to make those convenient for humans to get to. And it's the same with the canine good citizen classes, those are usually five or six dogs per class.
Weekends and.
Weekends and evenings. And Len mentioned to me, um, that there might be concerns about cleanliness or trash removal, so I called a couple trash removal companies and sort of, uh, and I think that what we'll end up doing is using a, a one-yard, um, cart for rubbish with once-weekly pickup. Um, and they might have a separate container, ninety-six gallons for recycling, 'cause we will recycle, 'cause it's really important to us.
All right, will that be outside, uh, in your parking lot area?
Um.
That container, the one-yard container?
Uh, yes, we have an area where we have the one-yard container on that site plan.
Where do you have, oh, I see it, okay. It's about a loading dock? Yep. You're not using that, that shed area for anything else, right?
This, this.
Yeah.
Uh, that shed area, that's the, that was the, uh, we're closing that in, and that's gonna be where dogs can go out and run around a little out there.
Right, no, because you have a new, uh, ten-foot-high gate, what's the purpose of the gate?
The gate over here?
Yeah.
Uh, that is the closure, it was right now, it's open, half it's open, half it's closed.
Right. Okay. Oh, so you're gonna keep it, uh, is it, is it an open gate or a closed gate?
Well, right now, it's, it's open right now.
Okay.
And we wanna close it.
So it's, it's a solid gate, is what I'm trying to figure out?
Uh, it's a solid wood area.
Okay.
We're gonna actually put openings in these areas, but we're gonna basically put another solid wood so it matches the existing gate.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I know some people worry about smells inside dog facilities, um, but I, I have a run facility in Manhattan myself, and I'm also gonna be using the Instinct sort of cleaning protocols. And neither my facility nor Instinct East Harlem nor Instinct in Englewood smells bad at all. Um, and I think that's mostly because all waste is immediately contained, and the area is disinfected and wiped down, and then there's also daily disinfection protocols. Um, and then we also have, um, custom UV air scrubbing system, which is what they use in, um, the air shuttles with NASA when astronauts are like up in space for so long. Um, they've sort of commercialized those units, and you can put them in your dog daycare now. So, that helps.
So what would the, the waste itself, is that disposed, how is that disposed?
Um, all waste is picked up in a bag, and it's disposed, it'll be in a big black trash bag, and then those will be in the one-yard container outside.
So, so the one-yard container is primarily for, uh, for waste?
It's for all the waste of the facility, so.
Include it.
There might be dog waste.
So I'm saying, excl- including dog waste?
Including dog waste.
And, and you pick up once a week?
I could do it more often, when I talked with volume, um.
I'm not concerned about volume, just having waste there for a, a, a week, I'm not sure how, you know, uh, it's gonna rest there for a week, especially in the summertime, you know, flies and.
Well, we could also go with the Village of Tuckahoe Pickup, which then we get like twice weekly pickups plus the.
Yeah, I, I think you need to kind of look at that a little closer, I think it's, it should be picked up more frequently, especially, especially waste.
Okay.
Yeah, especially gonna keep it outside, it's, uh.
Yeah, we, well, we definitely don't want, it's right by our entrance, so we certainly.
I know, but you have na- you have a house behind you, so we'd wanna be good neighbors.
Yeah.
You have a park next door.
There's ball courts next door.
Yeah, so just think about that.
Okay.
Well, just a side note, uh, what would be the maximum amount of dogs at any given time?
So we're looking at having sixty-eight, um, kennels for the dogs, so that would be the maximum number of dogs at a time. There's usual, uh, uh, in our busy season, we will have between twenty and thirty board and trains with us. Um, and then there's always a certain number of puppy-raising puppies, um, that have to have a space, but they actually go home with the trainers. So they're there during, when the trainer is working, but they're at the trainer's home when the trainer is not working. Um.
So given that amount, uh, the issue of waste should be discussed further.
Okay.
The volume of it.
Sure.
Maybe it's a twice-a-week pickup, but we'll talk more about that.
So, so can you kind of describe how the sixty-eight dogs, uh, what's the makeup of that, in other words, how many are being trained, how many are being boarded? So just get a sense of how the facility runs with that many animals, dogs?
Um, sure, so the, the dogs are, uh, they're on an itinerary, so that it's not, it is not complete chaos inside. Um, every dog gets four, like, visits to the potty yard or free time to like stretch their legs every day. Um, every dog gets training hours, um, every day. Um, the, they get group play, for the dogs who can handle group play, where they play in groups of like two or three or four dogs together. But that's all like sort of detailed out and scheduled so that, um, our spaces aren't having, like, craziness happening between dogs, like coming in and out.
Guess what, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you got, if you have sixty-eight dogs in the facility, right?
Right.
Um, so they're being picked up and dropped off, I would imagine, daily, some, some, what will be boarded for a week, or if someone went on vacation, or, so I'm trying to figure out what kind of volume we'll have on a daily basis. All right, 'cause let's say you, you're training puppies and it goes on with a, a trainer, right, that's one trainer, one puppy, so if, again, I'm just trying to figure out what the, how, how you have, you could potentially have sixty-eight, uh, dogs, right?
Right.
How does your, how, how does that work, what percentage of what, uh, again, I'm just trying to figure out how a facility's gonna work with sixty-eight people, 'cause of sixty-eight, uh, dogs, so is that gonna be sixty-eight, uh, dedicated visits to the facility, or is it gonna be forty?
Okay. Um, so all of the dogs who are in our care.
Right.
Are going to get the utmost love and care and attention.
You seem like a wonderful person, and I believe you, and I, and I think you're, you know, you're, you're gonna be wonderful with these animals, and again, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, is, I guess, the e, the traffic impact to the facility, because you're going to have, again, potentially sixty-eight, or let's say sixty unique trips, is it gonna be on a daily basis, is it gonna be forty maximum? Again, I'm just trying to figure out.
How many people will be coming, so in a facility, East Harlem has forty kennels, and I, I, we hope to have more than that, we have a lot more space than East Harlem does.
Right, okay.
Um, and with those forty kennels operating at maximum capacity in their busy season, they had six pickups and drop-offs per day on average. So the staff are coming in, and there's six to eight staff possibly on like the very busiest time, that's canine care team and training team, working with the dogs. But the clients coming in and out are much less frequent, dogs who are doing board and train, they have to stay with us for two, three, sometimes four weeks, because, because of the behaviors that they're learning, and to also peo- the length of people's vacations, like, we try to make it work for, for everyone, but some, they, they're not.
It's long-term boarding, basically, sounds like, or is it like, for example, if I'm going to an, to a meeting in the city and, and I need to board my dog, do I come to you for, just for the day program? How, again, I'm just trying to figure out how your facility works, and again, I'm really trying to figure out what the impact is on, you know, on that section of, uh, Main Street.
Right. So if there's, I guess, if thirty of the dogs, of this, let's say sixty spots are, are, are board and trains.
Right.
And then I have my ten-day schools, um, that I'm hoping to have.
Sure.
I, I guess, uh, um, we would have space left over for twenty sort of regular boarding dogs, who are maybe weekend dogs, or a shorter term, or they're not doing a special training program.
So, but you, but you're saying that not more than six people, the six, uh, unique visits on a daily basis, uh, for sixty-eight dogs, is that what I'm?
Well, for the board and train and puppy raising, yes. And then the day school, if, that, those dogs come in every morning and go home every night.
All right, so. That's about ten, I'm sorry. That's only ten.
And that's, that.
And the sixteen, sixteen total would be in and out on a daily basis.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, well, if you have six dogs that are coming in and out on a regular basis, with the training sessions, it's not just a training for a day train, they're going training for at least a week or two weeks at a time.
That part I understand, right.
So, most of the people are gonna be going, that maybe six dogs are changing on a daily basis, plus the day, plus the.
Plus the daily.
Plus the ten-day dogs, so sixteen.
So you're looking at sixteen potential transactions on a daily basis.
And do the owners stay a duration of time to, to learn how to train their dog, so?
Yeah, so, uh, they, it's, they have weekly lessons, um, with the day, the day-school dogs, they do monthly lessons with them, so they do four weeks of day school, and then the owner stays for a thirty-minute lesson. Um, so if you do Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, you can either schedule your, you know, Thursday night when you pick up your dog to do your monthly half-hour lesson, or you can schedule it for a different time.
Okay.
And then the, the board and trains, they do weekly lessons. They don't always have weekly lessons, because if the owner is literally away from the country, or, you know, not around, then, uh, we don't make them come back to do a one-hour lesson, but they get a one-hour lesson per week.
Okay. So when I, I come for the daily lesson, right, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna park my car in your parking lot and, and take up, let's say, thirty minutes, right? So, um, that, that's the part where you have that thirty minutes or forty-five minutes scheduled in your, in your app, is that what we're talking about?
The, the, the lesson is scheduled in the app? Like, that's scheduled at a time with the trainer, and then there are parking times, the parking times are ten to fifteen minutes. So you might be in, you boarded your dog with us for a week or two weeks, and then they're, they're doing the lesson, um, so your car is there in front of our space for an hour, but in that hour, a dog came, got dropped off, and the person drove away, and another person came in and dropped their dog off, and went away.
Right. So you're not gonna have multiple training sessions, uh, simultaneous for argument's sake?
It, it's possible that that would happen, it's more likely to happen on a weekend.
Okay, but the reason I'm asking all these questions is you have Orange Theory right across the street from you.
Yes.
And, uh, I just know that they're very, parking, uh, when the classes change, there is no parking, there's, there's challenges there. Um, so, again, I'm just wanna, I just wanna make sure that it's gonna be adequate parking for everybody and, you know, to, to be good neighbors. Um, all right, so again, I'm just trying to understand your business and how it works.
And maybe one other metric that would like help, help, um, understand is that, well, we're planning to start off with two, but have three full-time trainers working with us.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Excuse me.
Technically, all three of my trainers could be offering, we won't let that happen, actually, we, we will, we will manage the scheduling so that I don't have all three of my trainers offering hour-long sessions simultaneously.
Right, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have to stagger that.
Work for the facility either, inside.
Okay.
Because they, there's a few spaces that Len will show you that are like the big rooms where those lessons can happen.
Right, again, I'm just more worried about parking, because, like, you have Orange Theory there, and I think, I think there's, uh, I wanna say twenty-four, uh, spots. Uh, and I know that there's like a, a ten, fifteen-minute period where the, where the classes change, and then they're, uh, hour-long, uh, and there's really, uh, no parking. And I know they have like ten parking spaces behind the building, and then the other fourteen are Orange Street parking, and it's always a challenge to get, uh, parking spaces, so, uh, again, it seems like a little bit of what you're doing may spill over into the street. So, uh, again, I'm just trying to balance all these things, I guess we're trying to do that. Okay.
Uh, one thing we also like to mention is that the daily dogs, these are not people who can bring their dog every day for a drop-off, uh, this is only a few days a week.
Two days.
Two days a week maximum that a person can bring their dog. So we're not looking for somebody to drop their da- dog off, go to work, and come back on a daily basis. This is just, this is really more for training, this is, as I said, this is more of a training facility than just a boarding facility.
Okay.
You know, something that's important, even the daily dogs that are being treated the same way.
Okay.
I think that's important to know.
All right. Anything else you'd like to say?
Well, well.
I was, I was not talking to you, I was talking to Karen.
No, I, I think I said everything then.
Thank you, all right, 'cause he likes to hog the mic, I know.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. All right, Mrs.
I know there was questions as to what we have the.
What I'd like you to do is, um, uh, explain the project, so that people at home can understand the project, I know we, you've presented to us, please present to the village. So, start.
I'd like to present the project.
Thank you.
And just start with what the building is and what was there before. Uh, it was an industrial building where it was manufacturing going on, and as we just found out, that there were actually up to thirty-five people operating within that building. Uh, so we are certainly reducing how much traffic is in the building, how many people are being used there. In terms of dogs, it's not as much running around.
Okay.
But we are reducing the number of people and the number of cars that need to be parked in the area. Uh, the facility itself lends itself to what we need, because it is a, a masonry building, the majority of the dogs are gonna be kept actually in the lower level, in the basement and lower levels, as opposed to the pedestrians where, in the, where, close to the residential area, we only have the top floor is over there, and that's in the area where we have our behaviorists working, that the dogs, we don't have the dogs barking and things like that. Most of the storage areas.
That's on South High.
Yes.
That's South High Street on the corner, and Main Street is where the, the truck is there.
Yes.
Just so people at home could.
Main Street. When High Street.
High Street.
Where this building actually goes up, there's only one story at this point, which is the second floor level.
Okay.
And the second floor level is the area where we do have more the, the dog behaviorist is up there, we're not doing so much, uh, storage up there of the, you know, the, the boarding of the animals, what we are, gonna be training the animals up in that area, so it's not gonna be a high occupancy area.
Okay, Lenny, on the, just on your site plan, the right side is the park, right, at the intersection?
Uh, right here is the park.
Okay.
Over here, this is basketball, this is the building right here on the corner, there's the residence up here, this is the one-story area up here. It's down to two stories, and the basement area below this area over here.
Okay.
And the dogs, the majority of the boarding area is gonna be in the basement area underneath this area, so it's not near the residential, certainly it's not gonna be a noise issue in terms of dogs barking. And we do have ventilation systems, as we discussed, so this is gonna be ventilation, there are windows actually in the side of the building, in the basement area, so we'll be able to have that properly ventilated and taken care of.
Okay, great.
The, so the basement area is right here, where we have a large amount of the boarding areas over here. And so this is not the training areas over here, we are, have mechanical areas that are existing in the building, we are gonna be able to keep the area clean. I have the air, the, uh, U V air ex system, filtration systems built in, exhaust fans also built into the area over here. On the first floor, we have the flex board, where we also have the personal dog care, which is where the puppies are gonna be trained, so that's in the front of the building up here, and the doggy interaction playroom area up here. This is where they're gonna have the two or three dogs learning to get to know each other, being able to work with each other, this is all the training sections over here. Uh, and the area up here, which is where we come in at the building, where the areas, we're gonna have this area, we're gonna close this area off so that it does match the rest of the building, and have the dogs be able to come outside and have a little free time outside. Once again, only gonna be a few dogs at a time, be going outside with the door, so it's going directly from the building into the area, so it doesn't come spilling out into the parking lot. That area stays clear for people only. And then on the third, on the third level, which is the top floor over here, uh, this is basically where we have the trainers, additional dog training up here, and the behaviorist in training areas over here. So, once again, the main training areas over here are gonna be maintained, on the first floor, we're just gonna be having some of the play areas over here, we are adding one dog wash, because after the dog's been there for a couple of weeks, you do wanna give them a bath there for a while before you give them back to the owner. So, but we're not grooming dogs, it's not what we're here for, we're here just to train these dogs as much as possible. Uh, the question that come up about the parking, and, which is the additional material I gave you, is that we do have at least three easy park-offs coming in here, I mean, they've had as many as, uh, six cars parked in here, we're looking at three to four people parking here at a time, and there's certainly enough room for cars to back up and go out the existing entrances. This is, we're not adding any curb cuts to the spaces, all existing spaces.
Lenny, a question for you, and which one of those are gonna be the handicap one?
A handicap will end up being this one over here by the entry.
Okay.
That's why we have that big space over there showing the entry with the stripe. I'll, I'll indicate that handicap if you want that more.
And, and one, one fast question, is the building sprinkled by any chance?
Building sprinkled, I do not believe so.
Okay, 'cause we're going with three levels of occupied space now, right?
It's what it was before. It, pre-existing that way as a.
I know, we just gotta look.
F-one series before as a factory.
Right, we just gotta make sure that it's.
Yes.
Change of use and it means it complies, that's all.
Yes.
So I have a, a question, so you, you have the ventilation system, the, uh, filtration system down in the basement, uh, where does that vent to?
It recycles and vents, it can vent to the exterior, there's windows out here.
So is, all right, so, um, the air that's being vented.
That's all filtered, all filtered.
All right, so not gonna have any odors spilling onto the park?
No, this is all cycled air, it's all through. No, this is all cycled air, it's all through filtration systems, through charcoal systems.
And is there a maintenance program, in other words, is there, if somebody comes in and maintains it, or is there something up to the, um, owner to change his filters?
It's up to the owner to maintain the filter system.
Alright. And, and the other question that I have is, so you're gonna, you, you said you, you had, you're going to have six, um, uh, trainers. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're gonna start with, um, two and then move up to three full-time trainers.
So how many staff will be on-site, in other words, you're gonna have a manager, receptionist, uh?
Great, so I think that we would probably have six on-site at the most, at, um, at the same time. We don't try to schedule all of our trainers on-site at once, and all of our trainers get, you know, evenings and two days off a week, which, that might sound crazy, but trainers really appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Um, so, yeah, the, there's, if there's two, two trainers on staff, but then we have our receptionist to be there, um, all the time.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Nine to five.
And then we have canine care staff that, and they do like sort of the basics of cleaning, feeding, and taking care of the dogs, and, uh, some of the canine care staff also work with the day school.
How many, uh, canine care staff will you have at any one time?
Um, we could do up to three then, that would be-
Okay, so, alright, so those, they'll go in and clean the kennels and play with the dogs and whatever else, right?
Yeah, they, they do a lot of chopping up of treats and stuff, and they can assist with the day school dogs. And, um, they also, someone's always there, it's, it is twenty-four hours, so-
Oh, okay.
Someone spends the night.
Someone spends the night there, and you, what time does your facility close?
We're, we're by appointment only, so if someone is running super late and they wanna get their dog at ten o'clock, and they've called ahead and, you know, let us know they're running late, they can do that, 'cause someone is there.
Right, so, but typically, what were your, uh, operational hours?
I would say we're, we're busiest between, the, the trainers are in there between ten AM and eight PM.
So you-
Doing their board and train dogs, and then doing, if they have nighttime lessons with, with owners.
So I, I, so I guess I'm trying to find out, so your hours of operations are gonna be ten to eight? I would imagine, no?
So, day school dogs, were there, someone's there twenty-
I, I, I understand all of that.
The day school dogs, do they come in when the owners need to drop them off so they can get to work on time, so we'll have-
So let's say most people go to work between seven and eight, so, so-
Those dogs come in early.
Alright.
Um, but they're going to, you know, be taken in and they move into, um, kennels, where they wait for their enrichment sessions and playtime.
But there's a transaction taking place at that point, right, in other words, someone's greeting the person at the, at the door, and taking the dog, signing him in, and all that good stuff, so that takes a few minutes to do that, right? So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, your facility, let's, generally starts between, let's say, seven, and maybe the last dog pickup, let's say, most people get home at seven, and say, eight o'clock, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
I understand you're gonna have, you know, a, a staff, someone on staff there or on-site twenty-four hours a day, I understand that, but primarily your, your business hours are gonna, let's say, be seven to eight, is that fair to say?
That sounds fair.
Okay, just trying to understand. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Alright, thank you. Um, so, um, what, what's the variety of dogs, are these, um, like rottweilers, small dogs, big dogs?
I'm gonna do that. Um, we work with family dogs, so whatever kind of dogs that people get to live in their homes with them and that they need help with, we'll take those, those dogs, yeah.
And, and have you had any, um, situations where dogs have gotten loose, ran around the facility or outside of the facility?
There are a lot of, um, safety measures in place to keep dogs, um, contained and separated, and getting the, the exact treatment that each dog needs, um, 'cause some of the dogs do have fears of other dogs, so we, you know, you can ask Len, we're like, we need ten feet of aisles between the, you know, kennels so that the dogs can waywalk, walk, um, around. Um, I'm not saying that there's never human error, but I, I have never had a crazy dog loose in the facility ravaging anybody. Have you?
Escaping, I guess he's asking, does that, any dogs escaping?
So, one of the protocols that we teach clients is to have two, um, methods for, um, holding on to your dog, so, um, two pieces of equipment that are, you know, so that if one of them fails, you, you still have the second one, and we also do that, we don't just tell our clients to do it, we actually do it with the dogs. The dogs won't be going out of the facility unless they're with a certified dog trainer. The canine care staff don't take the dogs out of the facility, only certified trainers, and only when they're working on something that needs to be done out in, in public, like walking nicely on the sidewalk or-
So, so in other words, yes, you, so you'll be able to take, I guess, dogs out and, I guess, uh, teach them how to walk on a sidewalk, or?
It depends on what they need to do, when I was visiting at Englewood, I met a dog who had like, a terrible phobia of manhole covers. Like, if she saw a manhole cover, she had to walk like ten feet around it, which is not an easy thing to do in New York City. So she was in Englewood, New Jersey, like, learning to love the manhole covers, like-
Cool.
Chicken, 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 manhole covers, and that was-
That how it works, huh?
New association.
Gotcha, okay.
I don't know what her old association was, like-
Explosion in Manhattan.
Maybe she saw the movie It or something, yeah.
Manhole explosion in Manhattan, perhaps, I don't know.
She watches too much news.
Exactly. Alright, is there anything else you wanna share with us?
I'd actually just like to mention that, mention that, uh, the facilities, we could stack a lot more animals here if we needed to for boarding, but there are rules and regulations with this particular company, 'cause this is a national company, they must have that ten-foot border, so that the dogs are not right on top of each other, so they do control the dogs. Most facilities do not have that, there's no, no regulations like that. And that's why we have all this space around, we're not crowding in the dogs, this is dogs that are being comfortably kept, you know, with each other. So there's not gonna be those type of issues. We're not training dogs here for killer dogs or police dogs or bomb dogs, these are dogs for homes, for people to use, so, that's, it's try to keep the dogs calm and tame is really what we're talking about.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for the ten-foot aisles, by the way. He would've probably put more kennels in there, knowing him. Alright, so, uh, you have some homework to do, uh, so talk to the Shiloh Baptist Church, I'm not sure what the procedure is for getting a, a parking lot license. Alright, so, uh, and that's gonna be critical?
Yeah, I know, we had spoken to Bill Williams about it, he didn't think it was an issue, he just has to get them to come in and-
They're gonna have to come in and, yes, and then you're gonna have to have a lease, and then-
Yes, that we will take care of.
Cool. Thank you, pleasure meeting you, and hope to see you next month. Alright, night, guys. Okay, so at this, uh, point, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing, can I have a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, is anyone here this evening speaking this application? Since there isn't, oh, I'm sorry, come on in. Give us your name and, uh, your address.
Oliver Stauffer, uh, I'm a resident of Tuckahoe, one Scarsdale Road, but also owner of one forty-five Main Street.
Okay.
So the chairman and the board, thanks for allowing me to speak. Um, it, I, I do, just wanna shed a little color on what that building was, where it came from, and why I think it, this is actually one of the better uses for it today. So it has been industrial property for over a hundred years. The founder of Vitamins, uh, began his business there at one forty-five Main Street. It went on to be what I would call a sweatshop factory for about forty years. And, but actually, many people here in Tuckahoe did find employment there, I don't know what their maximum capacity was during that time, but last year, when PTI was still operating there, we were actually above thirty-five employees. And so that gave you a little bit of color as to what-
Where did those thirty-five, uh, employees park, by the way, just curious?
That's a great question, so, uh, many of them found parking in the street. We also, uh, leased about eight spots across the street underground.
Underground where?
Uh, with, uh, the Maron properties.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
So, uh, it was very kind of him to, to offer that, and we had quite a good partnership there as well. And, uh, many employees found parking in the streets, okay? Uh, only about six or seven employees actually took the train into Tuckahoe. The, a relationship with Shiloh Baptist Church was, uh, I think, one of, uh, a little bit less formal, you know, we sort of thought of it, it's nice to have God on our side, I don't think the board would, would object to that, and so we had a relationship where we donated money to the church every Thanksgiving. We offered a lot of, uh, turkeys and food to their, uh, meal drive that occurs, they have a nice meal the Saturday before Thanksgiving, so we had a relationship with them, and they allowed us to park there during the week. And so that was about ten people that would park there and walk around the park, so, that's how we operated. But, one thing that I think is gonna, uh, really be a difference, a year ago, what you would've, have seen is every morning, FedEx truck and the UPS truck would drop off, they would be parked on one forty, on Main Street, they would not pull in. Every evening, they would park there, picking up and dropping off. And during the day, we would have palleted shipments being picked up, we have a forklift at one forty-five Main Street that's no longer there. So we had large shipments coming in and leaving, aside from the thirty-five employees that were there. So this is a huge shift for that property, I think it's a shift that makes this, this property really right for, for Tuckahoe. On the second floor right now, there are twenty-four cubicle spots, and I certainly think that that's not, uh, the use that we hope to have for one forty-five Main Street. So I think that reducing the headcount that's inside that property, but giving it value to Tuckahoe, I think is certainly something that, uh, would be of value to the Tuckahoe community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So at this, uh, time, I guess we'll keep the public, uh, uh, public meeting open, so at this time, make a motion to keep the public meeting open. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, so do I have to close it now as well, and, okay? Alright, so, we'll see you, I guess, hopefully next month, thank you. There's eight Marbledale, Marbledale here? That's you? Oh.
I'll be your first customer.
Good for you. Come on, yeah, yeah.
Um, my name's Lizzie, I'm from Station Glow of New England, we are the, um, people that applied for the permit application for eight Marbledale.
Okay.
It's Marbledale.
Marbledale?
Okay, I keep calling it Mapledale and they keep correcting me.
Okay.
So, um, it's currently-
So, L- Lizzie, who do you represent, I'm sorry?
Station Glow of New England, we're the image contractors.
Oh, the image contractor.
We're the ones that would be doing the work essentially if everything is-
So you would be rebranding the actual canopy itself, in other words?
Yes, it's, well, we'd be putting the image on the canopy.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it was white for a reason because of your codes, um, I didn't see anything in the ordinance that said it had to remain white, so I'm not sure if they just didn't, when they installed the canopy, they just didn't put an image on.
Maybe it wasn't mobile, or maybe it was a different, uh-
It could've just been a different one at the time, they just painted it white, I didn't see anything in the ordinance that said that it needed to remain white.
Did you call the building department just to get clarification, or?
I pulled the ordinance up on the website and reviewed it that way, but I didn't call.
Mike, do, do you know if we have any sort of restrictions against signage on, um, gas stations? Put, make sure the mic is on, please.
No matter what the property is, I believe, don't quote me a hundred percent, you can't have more than one or two signs, so maybe they weren't able to have the mobile on the corner and the mobile on the thing.
So maybe they were considering more color.
Yeah.
Right, and I know, I know some municipalities also have a, a limited scrap footage, uh, on signage, so I'm not sure if they have that as well.
About the signage, but I wasn't sure because the canopy right now is currently all white.
Right.
And we're proposing two-thirds blue, one-thirds white.
Okay.
I didn't see anything about color, per se, in the-
No, the color's up to them.
Codes, oh, okay, I just saw that, the, the signage, like you mentioned, but I didn't know if they, the board or if the town considered more color signage or just color.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I think we need to do some research on that, just to figure out exactly what's allowed. And the second question I have is, does this have to go to sign and, and awning board? It does have to go to sign and awning?
There's a proposed, I just looked at it fast, there's a proposed LED lighting?
Yes.
Okay, that's not allowed according to our code either.
Around the canopy, or the, the pricer?
I think it's the pricer, right? Yeah.
Okay, so it can only remain the font-
Why, you have it on a canopy as well, I didn't, this is my first time.
We're, um, we're proposing an LED light strip that hangs down three inches from the top of the canopy to illuminate just the canopy fascia, as well as the two-thirds blue strip.
Alright, wh- when do we start this, is it start again?
Okay.
Walk us through the project, and you're gonna have to put some, some images on, you know, that easel so that people at home can also follow along, do you have anything?
Yeah, it's an eight by ten.
That's fine, just put it up. And you have some clips if you wanna just hang it on a clip as well? Some echo clips up there?
So, yeah, um- So-
Yeah, take that with you, thank you. So to the upper left and upper right there's some echo clips, I don't know if you wanna hang some stuff?
So we'll start with the canopy then, currently it has two canopies on the property, there's the building and then the two fueling station canopies, right now they're both white. We're proposing to have the, like I said, the two-thirds blue, one-thirds white, with each canopy having one mobile logo on each end of the street. Also, there would be what they consider, what mobile calls a 2DI, or an actual light bar that hangs down, basically, say this is the top of the canopy, it hangs down three inches to illuminate only the canopy fascia. There's no lighting shining onto the actual parking lot itself.
It's at the upper section of the canopy?
It's on the upper section, yeah, it hangs down about three inches.
Okay.
But like I said, I looked in your ordinance, I didn't see anything about the color, per se, so I wasn't sure why the canopies were still white unless that was something that-
So, let me ask you a question, so I'm looking at your, your image here, right? And I see the, uh, on the upper left, you have the mobile and you have the, uh, the blue band, but I don't see exactly where you're placing the three-inch, uh, light bar above the, uh, the sign itself, is it above the sign?
It's not above the sign, it's only on the blue.
It's only on the blue, so it's not, it's not represented here on your, uh, so the horizontal line is not really-
Really draw it on there.
No, just to have a horizontal line, so that there is a-
Yeah, no, there's, there's nothing represented on the drawing.
And that light bar will be blue as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an, it, the best way to explain it is, you know, the, the rope lighting?
Yeah.
That's what it looks like.
A strip LED?
Yeah, and it's protected with a piece of blue plastic so that you can't see it when you're driving down, you only see the illumination behind it.
Okay. Alright, so, so you're looking to add the, uh, the light bar basically and the branding to the existing, uh, canopies?
Existing canopy, yes.
Got it, okay, so that I understand, okay, so then you also have a, um, I guess you have pylons here, right? Alright, so then you have the, the mobile, yes, LED, and Mike is saying that we do not allow LED, correct?
So you only allow the manual font pricer, that you have to change with the suction cup?
They can go and request that sign to go in front of the sign and awning board and see if they'll allow it, but the code doesn't allow it right now, that would be a denial, and they'd have to give a variance based on that.
So do they go, do they have to go to signing board first, or, or?
They could, if they, or they gotta strike it from you, 'cause you can't approve it the way it is right now.
Correct, right.
So I would have to go to them, then come back to you guys for this?
For that, yeah, that's what it sounds like, if, if you wanna maintain your LED, uh, signage.
Yeah, that, that's the whole purpose of this.
Correct, right, okay, so-
But I, let me, before we even go there, let me get clarification from Bill Williams to make sure, you know, the process as to why you're in front of them other than the canopy being done, and then we can go from there as to the signage. Uh, the planning board doesn't really look at the signage, that's the sign and awning board, but if that's tech, technically, I believe it to be a sign, that would be the sign and awning board. The canopy and the lighting of the canopy would be them, because there's no signage, but now you're putting signage on that canopy from what I'm gathering, so you gotta go to both boards.
Okay.
Um, but again, getting back to the LED lighting, we don't allow LED lighting, and I'm looking at some pictures of, like, even the rope lighting that you're putting around the canopy from what I'm gathering, they can look at that, um, and give its own clarification on that. I need to look at the code with Bill and see if you can even have rope lighting like that.
Even though it's shield-
It's shielded, but you're gonna see it.
Well, it's gonna cast a kind of a light, uh-
A hue on, on the blue, you're not actually gonna see-
It's more of an accent light than anything else.
That's what I see here with the-
No, we haven't, we haven't put it up yet.
That lighting.
Oh, no, this is just a representation of another facility.
Oh, that's not what you're doing.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
No, no, it's, it's just basically a kind of a, you know, the strip LED, uh, lights, it's in a, a three-inch cove, and, and I think you have, uh, you have a, uh, you don't have, so it's open below?
Yeah, it's open below, if you literally stand under the canopy and look up, you will see it, but driving down the road, you will not see that.
Okay, and are you, are you changing the, are you taking the canopy completely down and re-
No, no, it's, it's basically just graphics.
Just facially doing it.
Mike, it's just graphics.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, with the sign, and the, um, uh, the, the LED is also at the front of the, um, the three-inch by three-inch, um, um, light enclosure so that you'll never really see it from afar.
Okay.
As she, as she said, is you, you have to go underneath it to look at it.
So, what I'm gathering is the reason why you're here is because of the canopy being changed?
Yes.
Any of the signage, I believe you'd need to go in front of the sign and awning board.
Okay, so then everything on my application shouldn't have come here to begin with.
I, again, you're changing the canopy because you're putting, the colors are changing, right?
So, then I'm really only here for the canopy with them because the apertures?
So, let me, yeah, so let me ask you, so now you're also, you're putting the, um, the synergy branding on the actual.
Apertures, yes.
Right. So, um, that also has signage on it. So, in other words, she's putting these, uh?
The two, the pictures you were just looking at.
Yeah, um, and then, and that's what Mobile is doing on all their gas station right now, they're putting the synergy, um, logo. Uh, it's basically a graphic pa, it's not a gra, it's actually a kind of a triangular piece that, uh, goes over the, uh?
It's a, it's called a truss support, it's.
I, look, they did, they did it on twenty-two, I know exactly what it is, they did it on the next municipality down the street from us.
So, basically, I mean, it's, it's prefabricated, they're gonna bolt it down to the floor and, and goes over, uh, goes over the actual.
It's like a sleeve, it goes right on.
Uh-huh, it literally slides right over the, the truss.
Right, so with that, in essence, that's also still, because the only function really is its signage, right? Signage and is it also a trash can?
No, it's just signage.
So, it's just signage, so it sounds like it has to go in front of signage owning, alright, signage board.
Technically, I'm at the wrong board meeting.
It's okay, it's a pleasure meeting as well, it's alright.
Wrong board meeting. You can turn back to Connecticut.
Okay, wanna switch keys or something, what are we doing now?
Is your car nicer than mine?
Probably.
But I have a question, did, who'd you get clarification that you had to go in front of the planning board for?
A woman named Mary Ann sent me the whole package.
So, let, let's go, let me take a, let me talk to them and to see why you were sent to the, they must know something that I don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
At, at minimum, you have to go to signage.
We were originally supposed to be on the October board at two-thirty or something and then she said that we couldn't, we weren't on that one because I didn't get all the paperwork in. And then she said, we'll see you on the nineteenth at the meeting. Was there a meeting at two-thirty today because I clarified the time twice with her?
No, but we got, we got your package, so, so she sent you to us for some reason.
I wanted a clarification on, I don't know why.
We're sorry about that.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Yeah, lovely town.
Thank you.
Very familiar with Eastchester, go, right down the hutch.
Exactly, yeah, you're hitting all the mobile, uh, gas stations, good for you.
Pretty much everyone.
Exactly, good for you. Um, okay, so hopefully we'll figure this out and if you have to come back to us, I'm sure you'll see you next month.
Okay, and that's the December meeting you're saying.
Correct, right, so, Mike, tomorrow, you'll just take our information, so we have some.
Well, I'm sure Mare has your information, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so she'll get in touch with you. Again, the only reason why I think that, that you are in front of them is because you're changing.
I'm changing the actual fascia of the canopy.
Correct, and that, I think, would've triggered that, these guys, but they'll leave the public hearing open if they have any questions for you in regards to the color changes and stuff like that, other than that.
Yeah, cause she even sent me, I asked her, you know, what application I needed and I sent the bill, the regular sign in building and she said, no, no, you need this one.